Looks like we're on, and thank you and welcome to the April sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, nine AM City Hudson City Council Meeting. Please call the roll if you would please.
Deckent?
Here.
Dave Line?
Yes, here.
Soldner?
Here.
Pyros De Carvallo?
Here.
Enskee?
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll bear with me, I'll attempt to say the prayer this morning. We're lacking in somebody with more qualifications than me, but I'll see if I can muddle through. If you'll bow your head for a moment. Dear Lord, thank you for all our great blessings. Thank you for the wonderful weather we've been having as of late. As we enter into this holy holidays coming up, Easter Sunday, we wish those that are traveling safe travels. Those that are with their family, that they enjoy their good times. In your name we pray, amen.
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 Next item, please.
Item four, Proclamations.
Alrighty. Let's see. Alright, Justin. Oh, okay, as well? Okay. Whereas, in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas, trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas, trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas, trees in our city increase property value, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas, trees wherever they are planted are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And now, therefore, I, David A. Enskee, Mayor of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen, as Arbor Day in the City of Hutchinson, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations.
Sure.
Justin, you're on it.
Good morning, Justin Combs, Director of Parks and Facilities. This year's Arbor Day is Friday, the twenty-sixth, April twenty-sixth. We will be celebrating that once again with City Beverage and fourth graders from Plum Creek Elementary at Orchard Park. That's at one o'clock. We're gonna be planting trees in the parking lot, as well as the little plaza area. It's kind of the entrance to the disc golf course. So we planting trees, and also some perennials in some of the parking lot islands as well. So again, that's Friday, the twenty-sixth, at one o'clock. And City Beverage is a sponsor of that, so. Also, the other thing I want to touch base on real quick is something exciting that the Tree Board has been doing for the last several months. And that's, we're working on an urban forestry master plan. So that's something that is in the citywide strategic plan, is to develop this master plan. It's also in the bylaws of the Tree Board, but we've never had one done. We've always just kind of planted trees based on, I guess, where staff thought trees should go. So the urban, that's really the truth. So the, this master plan really is going to look at our urban canopy across the city. So using aerial photographs, look at where do we have tree cover? Where do we not have tree cover? Where do we have impervious surfaces, impervious surfaces? Those sorts of things. And really give us a lot of detailed information about the benefits economically, as well as socially that are coming from our urban canopy. It's gonna then develop goals and strategy to maintain that canopy in the future. But one of the most exciting pieces for us as staff and really for the Tree Board is we're gonna do a tree prioritization piece, a tree planting prioritization piece. So that's gonna really prioritize what section and what census block within the city would get the most benefit out of having street trees planted. And so it looks at things like property values. Where do we have the least amount of tree cover? Looks at income. There's a very strong connection between social health and actual physical health and having trees in your property or adjacent to your property. So it really looks at some of these lower-income neighborhoods that traditionally have less tree cover, and where can we get the most impact, the most bang for our buck when planting trees? So really exciting that at the end of this, we're gonna have to basically block level information that this block right here will get the most benefit from trees for X number of reasons. So pretty exciting, something we've never had in the past. That project's being funded primarily through the Tree Board. They collect private donations. We also have one individual who's made a private donation specifically towards that, and then the city's pitching in just a little bit of money. So primarily coming through the funds through the Trees for Tomorrow, which is the funds of the Tree Board. So as we get closer, we'll do a formal presentation and present the results of that. Probably, we're probably two months away from having that final report back, so. I think Carrie had a few things to add.
Good morning. So I'll echo that, yes, we're excited to have a master plan and have something to work off of when we're deciding where to plant trees in the city. All those staff has the expertise to know where to go. It will be nicer to have an actual priority. As a Tree Board Chair, I get the pleasure of receiving thank you notes from the fourth graders that all received trees in the City of Hutchinson. Every year, we partner with Dull Nature Center to help make that happen. So I just wanted to read you a thank you note from a fourth grader because I think it'll bring you some joy. Dear Madame, thank you for donating money for the Arbor Day tree. All of fourth grade got trees. We both know you didn't have to give us trees. I have planted my tree in my backyard. I will put a few squirts of water on it each day. I put it in the right spot so it will get sunlight. Thank you again for the tree. I hope my tree will be twenty to thirty feet tall in the next five to ten years. I will take care of my tree forever. From Landon Powell from Greater Elementary. And one more. Dear City of Hutchinson Tree Board, thank you for giving me a tree. I'm going to plant my tree at my grandma's house because lots of birds live near her house. Also, I picked the Schumard Oak because in the fall, the leaves turn a nice, beautiful, pinkish-red. I'm trying my hardest to take care of the tree by watering it two times a week. Once again, thanks. Happy Arbor Day.
Nice.
Thank you, guys.
I take for granted sometimes the trees that we do have in Hutchinson. And we do have some great established trees. Actually, as I was driving in, I passed the old Johnson's mortuary that had burned down, but the tree is still standing. If you get a chance, you should look. And it calls to mind, though, when I visited Greensburg, oh, I don't know, it was a month, month and a half ago, or something like that, and they still are very short on trees after the tornado that went through there. And it just looks stark and barren. So I take for granted, even looking out the window, I see the various trees. So yeah, good job, keep up the good work. Thank you. The next proclamation is for Fair Housing Month. I believe Jay is gonna join me? Okay. Whereas, April eleventh, two thousand nineteen, marks the fifty-first anniversary of the passage of the U.S. Fair Housing Act, Title Eight of Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight, as amended, of which Title Eight declared that the law of the land would now guarantee the rights of equal housing opportunity. And whereas, the principle of fair housing is not only national law and policy, but a fundamental human entitlement. And whereas, barriers that diminish the right and limit the options of any citizen will ultimately diminish the rights and limit the options of all. And whereas, the City of Hutchinson welcomes this opportunity to acknowledge the importance of fair and equal housing for all people without regard to race, religion, color, age, sex, disability, national origin, ancestry, or family status. And whereas, equal housing opportunity is a condition of life in our city that can and should be achieved. Now, therefore, I, David A. Enskee, Mayor of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, on behalf of its citizens, do hereby proclaim the month of April, two thousand nineteen, as Fair Housing Month, and express the hope that this year's observance will promote fair housing practices throughout the city.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm very honored to be able to accept this proclamation on behalf of the Housing Commission and the Human Relations Commission for the City of Hutchinson. Being the new Human Relations Officer, one of my, you know, specific tasks are to look into some of the fair housing processes and fairness and equity for all those who are citizens here. I'm just excited to be able to do some of that work here in Hutchinson. Everyone deserves equal, fair opportunity to safe and clean living. So thank you for honoring the Housing Department for this, for this month.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, if you will, please.
Item five, Oral Communic- oh, I'm sorry, Spring Cleanup Announcement.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Brian Clennan, Director of Public Works.
Brian, you don't look like you're ready to do any spring cleaning up right now.
No, not right now, but in a couple of weeks. April twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth is our spring cleanup. Stewsmans is gonna set dumpsters at fifteen locations throughout the community. We're gonna have four Public Works staff working eight to five on Saturday and eight to four on Sunday. They'll have a couple loaders out there to help assist folks with loading or unloading as needed and cleaning up those sites. And just stats from last year's cleanup. In two thousand eighteen, Stewsmans hauled away fifty-seven dumpsters, which equated to a hundred and forty-eight tons of waste material. So pretty good amount of waste. And that's been pretty similar over the last several years. And there are a few things, though, that cannot be put in those dumpsters. Just like to list those real quick. Tires, tree limbs, household hazardous waste, large metal items like washers and dryers. Also, any computer-type e-cycle waste or mattresses. And all of those materials can be taken to the Reno County landfill, which is open eight to five, Monday through Saturday. So that.
Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you.
Any questions?
Just to comment, I know a lot of people, I mean, you proved it in the numbers, but a lot of people take advantage of it, and I get an inquiry all the time. I think I've seen more of it on the Facebook page and things like that. So people are well aware of it and definitely take advantage of it. It's a good deal. Thank you. Next item, or no, within that, Oral Communications?
Oral Communications.
Portion of the meeting where anybody is invited to step up to the podium, announce themselves, an address, and anything they want to speak to that is not on the agenda. Please limit your remarks to five minutes, but please feel free to approach the podium. If there's anybody, sir? And again, if you give your name and address, thank you.
Hello, my name is Nicholas Emmanuel Lem. I shouldn't take more than five minutes.
You're good.
I do, I want, I'm here to raise my concerns. One second. Two weeks ago, the Chief of Police announced a cooperative initiative program with AT&amp;T concerning 5G technology and smart cities. 5G technology will revolutionize the modern world. We're talking speeds a hundred times to two hundred and fifty times faster than 4G. Latency, the time required for information to travel a network will go from approximately a hundred milliseconds to one millisecond. Just wow. We are seeing the integration of society, infrastructure, and 5G technology to form smart cities. Cities integrated with the Internet of Things that sooner than later will monitor and rank you with a social score. The growth of the Internet of Things in terms of number of devices, revenue generated, and data produced has been accelerating. Most predictions expect the number of the devices to reach fifty billion in twenty-twenty from eight point seven billion in twenty-twelve. And the annual revenue from Internet of Things sales is forecast to hit one point six trillion by twenty-twenty-five from two hundred billion today. But perhaps, but perhaps most notable of all, the amount of data produced by the Internet of Things is expected to reach four point four set of bytes by twenty-twenty from just point one set of byte in twenty-thirteen. Does any of this make any sense for the future productivity of America? Okay, how about this? March fourteen, twenty nineteen, quote, "A fourth child has been diagnosed with cancer at a San Joaquin County Elementary School, and parents believe it's because of radiation caused by cellphone towers. The towers are spread throughout the community, but it's this particular near the school that parents say need to go. A doctor told us that it's one hundred percent environmental, the type of tumor he has. The effects of this radiation, high-frequency millimeter waves, on public health has yet to undergo the rigors of long-term testing. Human skin basically acts as an absorbing sponge for microwave radiation. Rare forms of tumors in the brain and hearts and rats of both sexes had developed DNA damage. A Russian study revealed that exposing healthy mice to low-intensity extremely high-frequency electromagnetic radiation severely compromised their immune system. It would contaminate our food supply, pose a threat to our planet's atmosphere, to our natural ecosystem. 5G is bad news for all living creatures and the planet we share. I have even raised the privacy concerns." Quote, "They who can give up essential liberty to obtain a little temporary safety deserve neither liberty nor safety. So why prioritize 5G for faster internet speeds? By the time an American child reaches the age of eighteen, that child will have witnessed, will have seen approximately forty thousand murders on television. According to a study conducted by the Mayo Clinic, at least seventy percent of Americans are on one prescription drug. According to one CDC, doctors in the US write more than two hundred and fifty million prescriptions for antidepressants every year. The average American spends eighty-six hours a month on a cellphone. One-third of all Americans, teenagers, haven't read a single book in the past year. The suicide rate is up thirty-four percent since the year two thousand. It may seem that I have changed subjects, but I believe and I know this will only get worse. There are links between radiation and mental illnesses. I personally cannot afford a hundred and fifty dollars an hour therapy sessions for my borderline personality disorder and medications. And this, and we're talking multiple visits a week. Only to go outside and it to be Chernobyl without any warnings from my local government? I have borderline personality disorder, and I have, and there's many subtypes to it. I have one where unfortunately I perceive as being paranoid without any, without any sense to be. I feel like I'm being tracked without, without really being tracked. And now that I go outside and I see all these cameras when I drive, when I walk, to me, that feels unnatural. It makes me feel that I cannot enjoy my community safely. And now we're talking that with 5G, we're even gonna add more infrastructure to our current infrastructure? And the current links that it is already showing, I feel that it's even gonna pose a healthier risk on my health and let alone the health of many people that don't even know. When I sleep now, I turn off my phone because I usually place it near my head with, over my alarm clock. I turn, I turn the cellular network off, and I've, and it's shown to reduce the radiation emitted from the phone. I'm just here to raise my concerns. Any questions?
Well, I appreciate you stepping up. It takes courage to do so, especially with your affliction as it is. I know there are numerous concerns with regards to privacy. You mentioned that and the other pieces. I know that our various entities that are looking into this describe this as a test, that we may or may not subscribe to some of these things. And I'm assuming that health concerns will definitely be a part of that consideration as we go forward.
And I feel like a problem, and I love, I love City Council because I believe this is the best way to get to the citizen at the most local level. I just feel like we're not doing, I'm not, and it's partly my job to get people involved in our community, but the outreach to come people and also raise their concerns and also to inform the people. I feel like I, that would be a great opportunity to expand upon, and I'd certainly love to volunteer in my spare time whenever I can.
Very good, and there are volunteer opportunities, and we appreciate your participation.
Thank you very much, yes. Have a great day.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Alright, is there anybody else that would like to speak at this time? Seeing none? Next item, please.
Item six, Consent Agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Deckent?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Pyros De Carvallo?
Yes.
Enskee?
Yes.
Next item, please.
Item seven A, Consider Resolution Approving Kicking It in the Thicket as a Special Event in a Designated Entertainment District.
You did a good job with that.
Yeah.
Paul Brown, City Attorney. And I'm hoping that-
Your first slide's a good one, Paul.
I was gonna say, I'm hoping that improves this as time goes long. If not, you may want to look at the copy that's in your, in your agenda packet.
Got it.
There was a disclaimer from GIS that this is not one of our maps.
When a, when an event is held in the streets of Hutchinson and it's going to include the consumption of alcohol, it requires a special event district to be established. If, it seems like you may be seeing a few more of these than you've seen in the past. That's because we used to handle them differently. We had an ABC agent that we had reached an agreement with that if we had the city manager's approval for use of that public property, that we could do so without establishing a district. Subsequent changes of ABC agents, that was no longer permissible. So that's why you're seeing this come before you and maybe a little more often than you have in the past other than just the rod run, for example. But since that one is not real clear, the, the area is between Fifth and Sixth on Main Street. And in your, your map on the agenda packet, it shows the location of officers, Hutch Police Department officers, for the event. It is on June fourteen, from five to ten PM, and has been reviewed by other departments within the city, including fire and, and police. This resolution is necessary for them to get their temporary license, alcohol license, for the event. And, and this is the first step of that. They're required to submit an application sixty days in advance, and they have done so. And the group itself is actually Ark River Pheasants slash Quail Forever, along with Salt City Brewing for, for the event. Any questions from the council?
Well, I only have one question, and that is, can you review with us our current policy on police security and how that expense is handled?
Well, I don't know that it's a policy. We require each, each one of these groups to have a security plan, and then it is reviewed by the police department as to whether or not that's sufficient. Because they put in their own requirements, and like on this event, there's gonna be some barricades for the street. They have to coordinate that with fire because that changed some routes in the event that, that they need to answer a call. All of those have to be coordinated in advance. I don't know that there's a set policy on each event because they're, they're all different.
Will the police officers that are on duty, are they, do we absorb that cost or is that paid by the sponsor?
No, we charge them.
We charge the sponsor?
Yes.
Very good.
Paul, do we still make contact with the affected businesses in the area just to get, let them know that this is being proposed and they have an opportunity to comment? And, and we didn't receive any negative comment in terms of the street closure?
The, the map alludes to, the one you can't see up there, alludes to some concrete barriers. There was some discussion I had the other day with the city manager about that. How's that gonna be coordinated, or who has those? How does that work?
That, that will be provided by the event planner. But that's a conversation that we've had under the chief, the chief police has indicated desire to be a little more, pay a little bit more attention to how we, particularly when we're blocking off main corridors, how we protect the people in that environment. Happens all over the country, and, you know, our wood barricades probably don't provide a lot of safety. Unfortunately, we required that on every event we had. You know, the concrete barriers, not everybody has them. We don't have them, that, you know, if we're gonna do that, we're gonna require that, that we as a city may need to acquire those and then charge for the use of them, or, because there is a lot of work in putting those out. It's not just simply lifting and putting wooden barricades out, so. But in this case, that was a requirement by the chief early on, and the event sponsor organizer is taking care of that.
Is gonna have that, okay, very good.
And the fire department doesn't take issue with that when it comes to response times?
They're, they're a part of that conversation and, and, but yeah, I think they'll have to reroute, they know that. And, and that gets into, you know, the whole idea we've always talked about. It's just, you know, we gotta be careful about just blocking off streets right and left for, for events because of what you raised there and some of the safety concerns, particularly Main Street, you know, Plum Street, some of our busier, busier streets. But yeah, they are aware of that. And, and there's access that would be granted in there if something should happen.
Very good, any other questions, staff or anybody? Not a motion?
I move we approve resolution authorizing Kicking It in the Thicket event, June fourteen, two thousand nineteen, as a special event pursuant to City Code Section eighteen dash eight oh one and others, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second? It's been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Deckent?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Pyros De Carvallo?
Yes.
Enskee?
Yes.
Next item, please.
Item seven B, Consider Resolution Approving Third Thursday Smallville as a Special Event in a Designated Entertainment District.
And here you have a follow-up, the event on June twenty in coordination with Third Thursday. And on the, I don't see it coming up, but in your, in your agenda packets, there is a map. And it shows the Beer Garden that kind of wraps around from Carl's Bar and around alleys, which would be a part of Main Street. And there we go, that one you can actually see. And you can see a wraparound on, on the unit block of West First there. And we have had events there at that location in the past. So that is, that is not a first time, maybe a first time for the name of this event, but certainly not the first location. We have had other, other events there. And it is from, it is on June twenty, which is a Thursday, from five thirty to- It is on June twenty, which is a Thursday from five thirty to uh eleven P M. And again, the resolution is necessary for them to get the temporary alcohol license for that location since it involves a city street.
Wonderful. Uh Paul did a great job of describing the legalese of it, but I see there's a couple representatives from the Hutch Rec in the crowd that might sell it a little better. If you will, could I invite one or both of you to uh give a little little more background? Kidding, Paul.
Hello, Tony Finley, uh director of Hutch Rec. Have with me Jeff Johnson, uh director of community events uh with Hutch Rec. Um this is the same event we did last year. Uh last year was uh our Smallville Festival. Uh on the third Thursday of June, so this is replicating that. Uh intend on doing the same thing in addition to the uh beer garden. Around Carl's, we will have the Smallville Five K uh through downtown. And also some live music and then the traditional third Thursday events. Uh last year, we estimated between twenty-five hundred and three thousand people were downtown uh for that event, so. Uh looking forward to that again uh this year and be happy to answer any questions.
I don't know if it'd be you or Paul, Tony, but um and I realize we're talking about a part of May, uh. First Street just around the corner, but I noticed the big difference in terms, or there's no reference to any uh uh. Security through H P D.
Coordinated between.
We we coordinate with them. Sa- same as last year and we'll have a uh around this specific beer garden, there will be a fence. But in addition, there's the street closures um that that we've done in the past and. We're in discussions with the barricades as as John mentioned, but.
Okay, so you're you're in discussion. Okay, just didn't picture it and.
We would not be able to furnish concrete barricades for every thing that requi- is required of this event, so. We'll we'll have a plan.
It wasn't so much that I was was I was just the difference and 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 the reference or a lack of reference in terms of of uh. That's all I was asking. Go ahead.
Uh of course, safety's always front and center for for everything Hutch Rec. We've closed streets numerous times uh throughout the year for the half marathon. Uh this event, third Thursdays and different things and we always coordinate with uh police and fire uh to ensure the safety. Sometimes our plan might look a little different because we're kind of an extension of those public events of of the city. And and so um maybe we get a little bit of latitude with that, but al- always safe, always safe.
Thank you.
Any other questions at Hutch Rec while they're up? No? Thank you both. Yeah. All right. Any other questions of staff? A motion then maybe.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing third Thursday Smallville, June twentieth, twenty nineteen as a special event pursuant to code. City code section eighteen dash eight oh one and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Uh it's been moved and seconded. Uh please call the roll.
Deckent?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Pyros De Carvallo?
Yes.
Ginsky?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item eight A, consider request for approval to submit the twenty nineteen Emergency Solutions Grant application on behalf of Bright House.
Good morning, Amy Allison Senior Planner. And as soon as it gets going. Anyways, um we're back again this year for the two thousand nineteen Emergency Solutions Grant. This is a federal grant administered through the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Um as you can see, uh the grant summary, this is again a grant for homeless shelters. Primarily the cost to administer a homeless shelter and also data gathering in this particular case. Um the city of Hutchinson has been a recipient of the Emergency Solutions Grant since nineteen ninety-four. At one time, we had three separate agencies that um spent funds. Um again, this grant period is from July two thousand nineteen to June twenty twenty. Our subrecipient agency is Bright House Inc., formerly Sexual Assault and Domestic Violence Center of Hutchinson. Um the city receives a small portion of the grant. Um this is added on after the final allocation is approved by the state. That is about two point five percent. That's for administration, which usually amounts to us checking compliance with the grant. And then also the um storing of all of the files for from five to infinity years, so that's that's what the city does. Um and then again, this grant request, and I see I put in the wrong year, there is forty thousand and ninety-two dollars. Um so that's all we have. Everything was provided in your packet for you, but I know Donna Davis with the executive director with Bright House is here. And she'd love to speak to you about all that they do, so.
Thank you, Amy. Please, Donna.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Donna.
So this last year has been really exciting for Bright House. In June, uh with help from the Hutch Community Foundation, we were able to rebrand from the Sexual Assault Domestic Violence Center to the name Bright House. New logo, new website, and. We knew it would be a good thing, but we didn't realize how really good it would be. Just the positive face is so much different. Um there are doors open to us, people willing to talk to us that weren't before. Uh and that part part of that's the national conversation that's made it okay uh to talk about sexual assault, domestic violence. But here on the local front, things have been so positive and just a couple examples. Last year, we housed over sixty people in our safe shelter house. It could be anywhere from a couple of days till we can get someone a bus ticket to go where they're safe. And it may be up to six months. We we had a lady stay with us who had been so abused and beaten. That it took six months for her injuries to heal. So there's no one size fits all. Of those sixty people, twenty-five of those were kids, cause moms don't come without their kids. And seeing this, we knew we had to do something at the shelter house for kids. Uh we wrote a grant and hired a child victim advocate who works with children of parents who come to us. Um and our child victim advocate told me a story. She's sitting on the couch with a a young boy, about eleven. And they're talking and he just says, I I don't wanna be, no, he says, my mom doesn't want me to be a mean man. And our advocate looks at him and she says, well, what do you want? And he says, I don't wanna be a mean man either. Well, digging a little deeper, we found out this young boy's dad was in prison for beating his mother. And so this little boy sees, I know this life. This is what I've seen. This is how I've grown up. I don't know any other way. But I don't want to be that way and I don't know what to do. And that's where we can jump in and help. Part of our work is breaking the cycle, which which is just so exciting to us. Uh we've been in area high schools for the last year, uh teaching about healthy and unhealthy relationships. Is it okay if um he won't let you see your friends anymore? Is it okay if she takes your cellphone every night and monitors what you've been doing? Just those kind of power and control things that later turn into physical abuse. Uh to help kids examine their understanding about healthy unhealthy relationships. Uh one of our advocates told me after she'd been to a class at the high school. The teacher emailed her the next day and said, a girl came up to me today and said she split up with her boyfriend. He had punched her for the last time. This is and this is a girl who had grown up with that in her household. She knew nothing different till we came and visited with her about it. It was just the right time. So breaking the cycle is what we're what we're all about doing. Um I hope you have seen in closing the the um story, it's been on the radio, on the news. And on the front page of the paper about the five Bueller High students. Uh when these girls started that project, they um were working with our advocate about healthy unhealthy relationships. Through their youth group at the First Presbyterian Church. When they go back to school, they're thinking, what what are we passionate about? What do we want our senior project to be about? And they decided we were still in their heart. They came and talked to me and they were hoping to get five hundred dollars. And so we talked for a while and they changed that to three thousand. They thought they could get. They got they've gotten over ten thousand. Our whole six bedroom upstairs in that house has brand new carpet, new wiring. Um the one of the dads of the girls who they were there over spring break, by the way. The girls, their parents and their boyfriends boyfriends were voluntold. That they would spend their spring break there. They ripped up all the old carpet and took down old light fixtures. Discovered that some of the wiring was rotted. The bedrooms all have ceiling fans now. New carpet squares that we can take the squares up and and put new squares down if things happen. So it looks more like a nice motel instead of a nineteen seventies um house. So it's just awesome to be able and these girls, what's cool, I think, is these girls see at age seventeen. That they can make a huge difference and have an impact on people in the world. So anyway, I wanna thank Amy so much because she does a lot of work for this grant. It's it's uh you know, the feds, they want everything just their way, so Amy's done a lot of work. Thank you.
Donna? This amount, forty thousand plus a little bit, how's that compared to uh recent past years?
It's about the same. It's been pretty steady and um the you know, in ta- asking for increases. They're just not willing to to do that. This grant stays pretty stable.
And give us a quick overview. How how does this uh how will this forty thousand be applied?
It's primarily operations, so um it will be part of the shelter manager's salary. Uh and then food, supplies, utilities, um database, software. So just what other sources, operations, what other sources won't come up with, uh it will pay. You know, people like their donations to go to um they don't they don't want it to be overhead. So this grant helps us with that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Uh you were giving out uh thanks and I I think we'd be remiss if we didn't thank you for the work that you're doing out there. And uh and I am, I'm enamored with the Bright House name and the imaging and and all that. I'm glad that it's been so positive and so successful as well.
Well, you know, it's interesting. This community says yes. Uh I just marvel all the time when you ask people for something. I rarely hear no from people to volun- volunteer their time, their money. Their resources, their thinking, their ideas, their participation. This community is awesome.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Any other uh questions or a motion?
I would move to accept the twenty nineteen Emergency Solutions Grant. Uh application from Bright House Inc. in the amount of forty thousand and ninety-two dollars and authorize the mayor to sign grant application documents.
Second.
Uh please call the roll.
Deckent?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Pyros De Carvallo?
Yes.
Yes. Next item, please.
Item eight B, consider preliminary design build agreement for an intermediate pump station at wastewater treatment facility.
All the fun stuff.
I I had to read this like three times in the packet. I'm like, what is this talking about? So enlighten me, Brian.
Okay, yeah. Brian Clinton, Director of Public Works. The intermediate, let me get the highlighter out here.
I think everybody's having just a little bit.
Okay, uh the intermediate pump station consists of five screw pumps um that were installed in nineteen eighty-five. And those screw pumps are located right there. Um parts for the pumps and the motors um are costly and difficult to obtain. And from mid-November uh through February, we were down to between one and two screw pumps out of the five that were operating. Um this required us to rent temporary pumps um to keep up with the amount of wastewater flowing to the pump station. And right now, we currently have three of the five screw pumps operational. Uh the proposed improvements um consist of constructing a thirty-six inch primary effluent pipeline. And also replacing the screw pumps with submersible pumps. And I'd like to just kinda show you how the the flow of the water works right now and then how the flow will work after these improvements. So right now, we've got, these are our primary clarifiers. And water or wastewater flows out of those primary clarifiers to this manhole here. It's then rip- flows by gravity to another structure located right here, which flows by gravity to these screw pumps. The screw pumps lift that wastewater up to a higher elevation so that it can flow by gravity to this structure right here. Which then splits the flow between our four aeration basins. One's up here hidden. You can't see it. Okay, there it is. Um another aeration basin here, aeration basin here and aeration basin there. So um after the thirty-six inch effluent pipeline, what we're proposing to do. Is build a pipeline from this structure here that connects to this pipeline that comes from the screw pumps right here. So we'll be able to take the flow coming from the primary clarifiers and bypass taking it to these screw pumps. And so that's going to allow us to reduce the size of the pumps. Um from a capacity of twenty-five M G D million gallons per day pumping capacity to ten million gallons per day pumping capacity. Now, the one caveat is that we've gotta verify that those elevations work. Based on the plans that we have, those elevations work, but we need to get out there and actually survey that, so that's the first thing that that we'll do with this project. So requests for qualifications were sent out to six engineering firms and we received three qualification statements back. And selected the team of Burns and McDonald and C A S uh construction for the project. And it was based on their project approach, um their the team that they've put together and also reference checks. Uh we're, city staff is recommending a design build project delivery method, which breaks the project into three phases. Phase one is a preliminary design and guaranteed maximum price development. And this phase would be completed by August twentieth of this year. Phase two is the primary effluent pipeline construction, which would be completed by November nineteenth of this year. And then the final phase would be the construction of the pump station, replacing those screw pumps with the submersible pumps. Which would be complete by s- uh June twenty-third of twenty twenty. The proposed agreement with Burns and Mack and C A S uh for phase one only. Which is again, the preliminary design and that guaranteed maximum price development is a lump sum contract in the amount of seventy-four thousand three hundred dollars. And with that, city staff is recommending that the council authorize the mayor to sign the attached agreement. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
So part of the design or the this first, the phase one will be, is the elevation, are the elevations correct to to work how you're hoping they will work?
That's right.
And if they're not?
And if they're not, we'll build the larger submersible pumps.
Oh, to to manual, I mean to to pump everything where it needs to go.
The smaller capacity, ten million gallons, we'll build it to the twenty-five million gallon.
Burns McDonald is a name that's uh I recognize. We've worked with them in the past. Can you tell me projects that we've utilized them for and how that worked?
Right, yeah, well, they did the um. The facility planning study for the wastewater treatment facility, so they're very familiar with our facility.
Okay.
Um and they're also doing all of our fourth and carry environmental cleanup projects as well, yeah.
And a great working relationship, it seems.
We do, yes, yes.
And this is your first priority on the study for the wastewater treatment, right?
This is the first priority and it's it became a priority when we had the screw pump failures in November.
Okay, got it.
Where's the funding? Uh is this something that we uh put into the the nineteen and twenty budget?
This is not something that was budgeted for this year.
Funding for this is coming from where?
Funding will come from the the sewer fund and we'll be bonding a part of the project as well.
Bonding part of it.
We will be, yes, yes.
What are you anticipating the the entire project to run?
I would estimate around one point two million dollars.
And the lifespan?
Lifespan for this project, I would say uh twenty to thirty years on that. And the submersible pumps will be um it it it'll be a better. More easily replaceable.
Yeah.
Than those huge screw pumps. You can't you can't really get a good scope of how big those things are.
They are big.
Yeah.
Yeah, from this picture, but those are are massive.
And antiquated. Nobody use uh utilizes that.
People have gone away from those, right?
I would also just add that this project delivery method that we're proposing is is exactly what we did with the sports arena. Uh which is a little deviation from the traditional, you know, design bid build, but um. Projects like this, it just seems to to really make sense, so.
So we'll be looking at a construction manager again, possibly?
No.
No?
Yeah.
No, it'll be a team approach. We'll we'll be sitting down with the contractor, with the engineer around the table and making decisions together. On this project and it's helping to speed up the project. You know, the one thing I I forgot to to mention is after phase two is complete, once we get that effluent pipeline in. We're gonna be um reducing the flow by sixty-five percent to that intermediate pump station. Which really reduces some of that operational risk of operating with just three three screw pumps. So that's a big advantage to going through this design build process. We're able to break that project up and get that important component done quickly.
Will you be coming back to us after the phase one and then talk about funding and specifically asking to go the design-build route and?
Yeah, there'll be two more contracts that'll bring to you the phase two contract and the phase three contract.
Okay.
Yeah.
One of those things you gotta have.
Yep.
So. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
I move to approve the preliminary design building agreement with Burns and McDonnell, CAS Constructors for an intermediate pump station at the wastewater treatment facility and authorize the mayor to sign. I'll second.
It's been moved in second. Please call the roll.
Deckent?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Yes.
Yes. Next item, please.
Item eight C. Consider job creation incentive policy.
Yeah, Mayor, Council, the attached policy is before you today is really just a reflection of our past practice on how we've operated with providing job incentives for those projects that come before you that create jobs in the community. And for several years, we operated without a policy and, and there was a lot of talk at that time that it provided us with more flexibility, that we weren't tied to a policy and we were able to look at projects on a case-by-case basis. And so, recent discussions with some of the individual council members have thought maybe we ought to formalize our policy, put it in writing. If you go back over the last two or three years, our job incentive approvals have mirrored what the county was providing in their form of policy. And so that really led me to look at a policy that really mirrors what Reno County has on the books today. And that policy before you is exactly what the county has with a few exceptions. And one of those exceptions that I didn't include was the comments, I think in the county policy, they talk about the applicant providing assurances that all those jobs created will be for Hutch Reno County residents. And we've had that conversation and that's really a difficult thing to monitor and, you know, there's a lot of workforce in this area that support local industry that are from outside of Reno County. And so that is not included in this policy. But, but essentially, the policy, you know, the minimum requirements are ten jobs to qualify. The minimum per hour is fifteen dollars per hour. We do have a job incentive scheduled that is fifteen dollars per hour, five hundred dollars a job, eighteen dollars per hour, a thousand per job, and then twenty-one dollars per hour, fifteen hundred per jobs. And then also, in addition to that, there's a bonus feature, as you can see in the policy, that once prospective projects create a certain level of jobs, they're eligible for a ten percent, a twenty percent, or a thirty percent increase in their, in their incentive. So the question of flexibility, still within this policy, we do have flexibility. In section number seven, we talk about advanced payment. Sometimes there's projects that are large enough that advanced payment might make sense. I mean, Siemens is a good example. So the council always has the ability to, to look at that and make that determination. Number nine, there's a section on the wages exceeding the policy, the number of jobs. We, you know, they're just, they're, so if a huge project comes in that really just has something for us, you still have that flexibility to look at this differently and not be bound by the parameters of this, of this policy. So, and then the other one I forgot to mention, in section number ten, we do, as a county policy, we do require that the applicants provide a satisfactory employee benefit program, health insurance specifically. So, so with that, you know, just be happy to answer any questions. Again, past couple of years, we've operated under the guise of following, matching the county's policy. And, and this might just kind of bring this a little clearer, even for the economic development folks that know exactly what the city's going to do. They know exactly what the county's going to do. And quite frankly, when you look at projects and incentives, the job payment, this incentive is probably not the biggest piece of what some of these companies are looking for. I mean, it's a nice, it's a nice give, but the big ticket typically is when you get into the property tax abatement percentages and those kind of things. And that'll be another policy that we're working on that will be coming to you in the future to kind of, to really quantify and, and formalize our process on how we grant property tax abatement. So with that, any questions that you might have?
I do have a few questions, John. I think this is a good start and I think it's probably long overdue that we probably look at a written policy itself. I've got a few questions as a release to kind of some clarity in, in the draft of the policy document there. I guess one of the things that strikes, strikes me initially is, is that this is performance-based and I think that's important for the public to understand that this is performance-based. In other words, the incentive would not be granted until there's demonstration that each of these employees have been in full employment with that company for four consecutive quarters. And I think that's a good policy. I like to clawback provisions and I think that's essential for good transparency. And I, I think it's also important that we reference this, is that this is only eligible for full-time equivalents. So I think those are all good components of this draft. But, John, I've got a few questions for clarification that I'd like to have maybe some discussion on this morning. One is, as it relates to eligibility of, of those types of businesses. And I've got a suggestion here, but I guess my initial question is, is that what would our intent be if, because this, the language is fairly wide open, that it doesn't necessarily restrict any type of specific business. In other words, would we incent a national restaurant, as an example? Would we incent using this policy for a national retail outlet? Or would we incent this for, say, a company or a service business, a retirement community center? These are all examples of what potentially could occur, may not, but potentially could occur. And so, again, just for clarity purposes, one of my thoughts would be that we would tweak the language or perhaps suggest some additional language, that eligible businesses would be those that would qualify under the state of Kansas Constitutional Tax Abatement Program, which is basically manufacturing, distribution, research and development. Those are the three by state statute that the constitutional tax abatement. Or the other side of it, which is a little broader, would be under companies such as an industrial revenue bond application, which would include things such as a hotel that gives some ability for a hotel. So that's one of my questions would be the eligibility. So we can discuss that. The second area is, is that in article number eight, there the language refers to the city, a city firm is contemplating an expansion. And I guess my question is, is that is it our intent to also include, and you've heard me talk about this before, the retention of jobs? We, we address expansion, but we don't necessarily address retention. And I can cite to you three or four examples of projects that they have been retention-oriented or related, based on the potential that XYZ existing company in Hutchinson is considering other locations in other states or other communities. And that we chose here a few years ago, at least through the county side, that they did not want to participate in a job retention project, other than when we had Eaton. We had also the Loan Corporation, which were contemplating other locations. And, and we, in the end, did participate. But again, for clarity purposes, I guess I'd like to have that discussion. And I, I've gone through this spreadsheet that, I'm not sure who prepared this here, but-
Abby.
That was from the Cedric County.
At the chamber, okay. This is their abatement policy and we're talking differently. We're talking job incentive. But one of the areas that struck out at me in terms of their language on eligibility criteria is that there were sixteen communities that participated in this. And in most instances, their language on an abatement and whether or not it would apply the same thing for cash incentives, is that they say they eligible for both recruitment and expansion, also for retention, retention and expansion. So I'm, I'm wondering if we could consider amending or expanding our language there that would include the word simply retention. Now, it may require perhaps some qualification that the instance that a company XYZ is contemplating a relocation and in order to show an expression of support, something to that effect, that, that we would be able to offer the same cash incentive policies. So, and then my final question here is, and this is a little bit unrelated, you know, and then we can go back and talk about these things, is that in the past year, a year and a half, the city has granted some type of an incentive, presumably some underwriting cost on a participation on two downtown projects. One was the Link Project, which I totally support. And the other was the Avenue B Project that we participated with the, the developer as well as, I think the developer in terms of cost sharing, some of those street repairs that were necessary to finish the project based on the incredible investment that those companies made. I'm just wondering whether or not that ought to be addressed in this policy or is that a separate policy? Because we may be forced with other future situations like that. So those are questions that I put on the table, guys, for, for discussion purposes. Eligibility, retention, and then the, the downtown projects.
As always, well thought out. I'm amazed you can read the fine print on that document. But, great questions with regards in no particular order, but I'm going to pick number eight. You talked about retention piece and I, I'm completely in favor of trying to figure out ways to help individuals that are already doing business in our community and certainly if they have any aspirations of leaving, what we can do to retain them. I, I always fear being leveraged between another community and so on and so forth. So spitballing here, if we did do some sort of retention piece, would it not have to be tied into some sort of a promise of growth on their side, be it in jobs or facility? I, I think you'd mentioned in one of those, it said retention and growth or something?
Retention and expansion.
And expansion, excuse me, expansion.
We have expansion already in the draft.
Right, right.
But not the word retention piece.
So.
Kind of wordsmithing here a little bit-
A little bit, but yeah.
For clarity purposes.
So those, those things jump off the page at me right, right off the bat on, with regards to that issue. The eligibility, I guess I would, I would ask you, because I, I don't know the difference again, between the two, is the only difference, the hotel piece, the two different eligibility guidelines or criteria that you use? One was for-
Yeah, the hotel is, is that, you know, it's a retail business. There are competitors and sometimes we frown on offering certain cash incentives to similar businesses that compete against each other.
Sure.
Retail, as an example. We've, we've done one, I think, John. We did the Coles, but we used, we didn't use cash, we used sales tax, I believe.
Which one?
On, on Coles.
Yeah, Coles.
Well, I think there are other types of businesses that qualify for IRBs that are outside of hotel and those three designations from Department of Commerce, because we did Entertainment District, the bowling alley that was at IRB. Ideatech is a, an accountee is a, is a technology firm and it, that, that was funded through IRBs. But my main concern on the eligibility for, like the Department of Commerce designations, research and development, what all does that entail? I mean, is that going to encompass some things like tech companies or, I mean, where would tech fit into those three? I would look for-
Yeah, Jay, there's, there's NACs codes that are used and I can't cite to you exactly the limitations or how broad those are, but they're fairly, they're broader than the constitutional tax abatement.
Yeah, I would definitely want it to be broader so that we're not falling into-
We don't eliminate.
You know, just old school type of primary job creation.
Absolutely agree, yeah.
And I'm wondering if the elements of this job creation policy, that is a minimum of ten, full-time equivalency, four quarters consecutively, why limit it at all? If, if we've created job, if, if some company, whatever the business, restaurant, nursing home, I forget the third one you mentioned, but if truly it's, it's new jobs and they, they meet the other elements, why not?
Well, my question would be, if we have a situation like that, where you have a service industry and the vast majority of people are being paid poverty wages, and then you've got ten people in management meeting the threshold, well, that meets our minimum of ten, so we're going to give an incentive to that company who isn't providing benefits or livable wages to the majority of their people. Does that make sense?
Hmm, does to me.
For, for example, a restaurant, typically there's going to be one or two, three, you know, managers, but, but the employees, as you mentioned, whether they're part-time, they probably wouldn't meet the-
Probably wouldn't meet it.
May meet the wages, may not, but probably not full-time benefits, so they probably wouldn't qualify. And what you're saying is, but we're going to incent them for the ten that do or five or whatever, and so.
I'm not comfortable with that.
A restaurant's, I mean, it, yeah.
Yeah.
But again, if, if we just leave it completely wide open, then to me, it puts some, some uncertainty on the staff's part as well as the council in terms of making these informed decisions, unless we have, to me, a little tighter definitions.
Is there a way to define primary job creation?
That's what I was looking at there. I mean, we, we say primary jobs and everybody has their, their mind. To me, that's, that's somebody that's making eighteen bucks an hour, providing healthcare, you know, supporting the family. That's a primary job. Well, your definition might be, you know, you live higher than I do, twenty-five dollars an hour or something. But, but so it is pretty open and pretty vague. And, and I guess my, some of my thought here too is because we talk about not getting ourselves too tied up in a policy to leave those kinds of things, because there is a committee that we have that meets and looks at these and come back to the council and say, hey, this one doesn't exactly fit, but what do you think? So that would be my only concern with getting us tied too down to details, other than what we have. And you make some other good points that we want to talk about. But as far as what projects qualify, I mean, if, if a new McDonald's came to town or new fast food, probably wouldn't be something I would bring to this group, but we would bring it if it was requested and you guys come in.
Yeah, you just never know.
Yeah.
But, and it's kind of one of those things, you, you know it when you see it, but that's hard to write in a policy. So the best thing we've got right now is new primary jobs with competitive wages and employee benefits.
Typically, a primary job, as I recall, when I was in the business, means from a practitioner standpoint, export. In other words, it exports wealth. And what does that mean? That, that means typically you're manufacturing or technology as the parameters for, what do you mean by export, which basically generates wealth to the community as opposed to a retirement center, no disrespect to them, but there's really no community wealth other than payroll.
Right.
Right, well, it's money coming into the community, not money that's been circulating within the community. Is, is that, I mean, that's how I-
I think so.
Kind of how I look at it. How would you verify the retention comparison? I mean-
Yeah, it's a-
You know, I mean, somebody could come and say, okay, well now we want to do this, otherwise we're going to go to Newton or we're going to go somewhere else. I mean, so how would you verify that that was really in process?
Well, I, you know, I think that becomes a situation where you've got to have clawbacks.
Okay.
You've got to have certain elements within the development agreement that shows certain performance standards that are, are written in a develop, in a, we did that with Eaton, because we all know the story there. And we did it with the Loan. Those are two examples that I recall. And Loans were looking at other locations and we just didn't dare but not be a player to the project.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with the concept. I'm just trying to figure out how you, how you verify it, how you document it.
Absolutely, yeah.
I wonder if this allows for enough flexibility, or maybe you add one more bullet point, that expansion, or I mean, retention projects can be considered by the committee? I mean, if that would allow for enough flexibility. I, I like that the policy is written with flexibility in mind, because we never know what can come up.
My leaning on the retention is, I think it's so different from creation that retention, including retention of this may just muddy this up more than- including retention of this may just muddy this up more than muddy it up. I don't disagree with maybe addressing it in a separate policy. In my opinion, at this point, we don't have a policy on retention, so it leaves it open to dealing with it as it may arise. I wouldn't include it in this policy if we weren't written, that we'd do something separately, rather than putting retention into a job creation policy.
John, when you talk about the other policy, like, on the tax abatement and property side, and maybe that will include also what John indicated, as far as if there's a specific investment, what will we do on the infrastructure side? Could a policy like that just be a catch-all for everything? Would that also include maybe a retention piece, or would that be completely different as well? Or would you rather put the retention in this one?
Yeah, I think, you know, the property tax abatement's kind of tied to, you know, new construction, new something happening, and, you know, as we talked at our retreat here a while back, you know, we've looked at ten percent, a hundred percent, or ten years, a hundred percent, like, that's just always the norm. Well, if you look at the policies that were put together by the Wichita Economic Development Group, they're, a lot of them are scaled down. We talked about, you know, if you're investing this amount, it's going to be this percentage. But, you know, the retention, we've got an existing project that is retention, but based on potential expansion and bringing, you know, some additional here. But just, we're leaving, otherwise, you know, I just, you know, those are hard to quantify.
They're hard to quantify.
But I do think when they come up, again, we'll know it, myself, working with the mayor and the chamber folks, and we bring that back, and we say, hey, we got, you know how we worked through the Eaton deal, there was no policy at that time, we worked through it, and I think we can still do that. I mean, just, you know, this policy in and of itself, and Councilman Davine, you've always liked the flexibility.
I have.
And probably maybe not having this all down, so it does kind of put it on paper, but it still, I think, leaves some things open for us as we go down the road. But, you know, your comments about what projects, and you're right on our property tax abatement, it's going to be pretty well focused around those three criteria that the state allows under the Constitution. Job incentive payment here, a little different, because some of these projects we funded here don't have anything to do with the property tax abatement side there, so. And as I said earlier, I think the job incentive payments probably aren't the big driver in our whole package, but it can help a small business, and I think that's probably more applicable there than the big, you know, the big ones. So, but I'm open to whatever you guys want to look at, but I do like leaving flexibility within this to talk about those things, so.
You mentioned several of the bullet points. One you didn't mention, but I think has some merit here, is number eleven, and it says, "Based upon the information provided and using established criteria above and such other considerations as the city deems prudent, the eligibility and amount of job incentives will be determined." So, I feel like that's the built-in flexibility. We could deviate from the other, the other options. Am I reading that wrong, or?
No, I think that's, there's a little bit for that.
We could go up, we could go down, based on the verbiage in that number eleven?
Well, I think that would also be the same verbiage you could apply to, it would include or could cover a nursing home, but could not cover a nursing home, or any number of examples that, in one case, we may feel it is fitting, in another case, we may not.
Okay, so, yeah, so if the strength, if there is strength in that number eleven, then that might grant us the ability to take those individual cases.
Same with thirteen. I mean, there's a lot of points in there that allow for flexibility and...
What was the section? We talk about, anyway, that there's that big project that comes in that's, you know, significant, I'm not going to say what that might be, but it's, you know, four hundred jobs, and it's this and this industry, you know, we're going to rally up, we're going to get together and probably do a lot more than maybe what this policy even provides to make sure that project happens. So, you know, the screening committee really consisted of myself and then the mayor, or his designee, his or her designee, and then we typically sit down with the chamber, obviously, and the county, and we kind of talk to these, you know, what do we think's going to be needed, and so, but this policy at least is a starting point, you know, when we start talking to folks about what we're, you know, what we're about. And again, I don't think the job incentive part of it is the biggest piece of what the interest is going to be, so.
Well, again, my thoughts here this morning was, is that, I guess what I'm looking for is, as an elected body, that we have some degree of consistency here, and if you all are comfortable enough with just the flexibility on a case-by-case of some unusual job retention project, that's fine, but I don't want to get us caught in a situation where, well, we don't have that in the policy, therefore, we can't participate, so I'm just suggesting that we add the word retention, the expansion slash retention into the policy.
You don't think number eleven allows the, other such considerations, allows the flexibility to do that? I mean, I don't know, John, I mean, this is...
It's how you interpret it.
Yeah, I mean, this is not my world, so...
Again, so many folks, we get the feedback that, you know, we've got to make sure we take care of our existing companies, and I think we all agree to that, so shouldn't it be to our benefit to include the word retention as an expression of, we're as much in support of a retention project as we are an expansion or a new recruitment?
And I guess that begs the question, then, with that verbiage, do you want retention to be a guarantee, that we will adhere to it again, with the exceptions provided in eleven and thirteen and others, or whatever?
Yeah, I'd just go back to number eight, where it talks about, when an applicant is considering locating Hutchinson, or when the city firm is contemplating expansion, I'm just suggesting is contemplating expansion slash retention, and has contacted the chamber, dah 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 dah.
Okay, so if you add the word retention in that paragraph, or wherever, are you proposing that the, if the company has jobs, that, twenty-five to forty-nine jobs, and they're full-time equivalent, and they pay at least fifteen or more per hour, that they'd be eligible per each of those jobs for the incentive to remain? Is that what you're...
I think there's got to be a clear demonstration that by the company, that these jobs are going to be retained, or there's a but-for clause, that without it, we likely are going to move our company elsewhere. And I hate that leverage, I hate it, but it happens.
Okay, but I don't think that responded to my question, which was, so, company X says but-for, we're going to leave, and the but-for that we would incent is the same thing as what's listed near the beginning of this policy?
I think so, Steve.
Fifteen dollars, or five hundred dollars per fifteen-dollar job.
In other words, the jobs would have to be retained and over four consecutive quarters to meet the intent of the policy.
Right, because they don't get any money until the four quarters are up.
But would they have to show growth, or would they be able to stay status quo?
I think you're saying status quo.
But, but I think the point is...
And if there has to be, necessarily needs to be some growth factor in there, then we ought to expect that.
I would think if we were going to invest in them, they would have to invest in us as well.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
Either jobs, or again, facility, structure, I mean, if we're even considering that.
I mean, the retention idea, and I think, you know, if that's in there, we're still going to evaluate each one of these individually. I mean, as we go, and we're going to come back, we're going to have that conversation. And the whole retention idea, I get what you're saying, because I hear that, too. If they leave, we'll never see any growth. If they stay, and we pay based on this, and they grow three years from now, then we win. And so, you know, you can look at it a lot of different ways, but I think we'll have that opportunity to not get, you know, buffaloed if they will.
I think you're right, yeah.
I mean, I think we will, we're going to know, I think. So, you know, adding that in there, the word retention, I mean, I think that's workable, but that's how comfortable you all are with it, so.
And if you want to expand on that with some qualifier, absolutely, yes.
You might want to make it a separate bullet point and add your qualifiers, so that it doesn't get buried in with the rest of the... I don't know, I'd like to see what you could come up with.
I like flexibility.
I just get nervous of starting a bidding war, if you will, between us and Omaha, or pick XYZ community, where, you know...
I agree.
They're going to say, the XYZ company's going to suggest that if I can participate in this program, I'll stay. As Tanya alluded, is there really any incentive, or any thoughts of actually doing that or not?
I know.
That is the part that, the crux that gets me.
Corporate welfare programs are no fun, but you're not really in the game unless you play it. And you have to think that the end result to the community is the same. If they leave, we lose all those jobs, you know, I mean, retention is, you're still having a big negative impact if you lose all those jobs.
Yeah, no, it's important, it's just figuring out the best way to measure it.
Best way to measure it. It sounds like we're leaning towards asking John to build in some retention language. I'm going to need to give some more thought to whether or not it even support, as I initially expressed. And I see where you're coming from, and I don't argue against having something that speaks to retention, and I don't argue against why we're talking about it. I get that. I'm just still not quite convinced that it belongs in this element.
And I'm comfortable with it being in there or not, because I do feel there's enough flexibility built in that we would be able to address those instances if they came up, regardless of it being expressly written. But I, you know, am on board a hundred percent with supporting businesses we have here now, and so if it were to come up, you know, it'd certainly be something I would support. But I don't know that it has to be in the policy. If we're not in agreement, then it has to be.
I think I would tend to agree with you in that regards. It bears merit. I see retention in my space, sales all the time, and it's huge, but I don't know if I like having it in there, if that gives up some of the flexibility that we appreciate about what's in this particular document here. So, I'm not sure that I would like to see that in there. And I deal in contract language all the time, so I know, if it's in there, it's in there, if it's not, it's not, and, but that would be my opinion.
Well, you know, if there's interest in retention, just having the word in there to me is better than having a separate section and trying to define it, and then we're getting into the whole...
I'm not sure, I agree.
You know, what is that? And, you know, retention is like, okay, we're going to, again, you go back to, we'll know it when we see it.
We'll know it when we see it.
We still ultimately have the say, and we've addressed that concern, that we are concerned about, you know, local business and retaining, and, but, you know, that can be difficult, too, to quantify and prove, yeah.
Yeah, I think the way this is written, we're not saying we owe anybody any of this. It's still subject to review by an internal committee before it's even brought before the council for discussion.
And then, you know, we get into the conversation, if we're, do we have retention, does the county have retention? And they don't.
They don't. And I understand that, where they've been reluctant to do that, but...
So, you know, are we putting enough in to really make a difference there? So, but I get it.
Well, to steer this a little bit, then, I guess, maybe to take the pulse of the group, is that, or, I don't know if I'm allowed to take a poll or not, but just to see, is that something that we want to consider, see some verbiage on, get a different draft, or is the majority of the group in consensus that they like it as presented, or where do we sit?
At this moment, I'm comfortable with what, as it's written.
And I tend to feel the same way. Again, going back to, I think it's thirteen that says, "We'll be reviewing the policy as we go forward," which will give us an opportunity if there's, if we find in the next year that there are some retention pieces that need to be involved, we can always review and adapt at that time, but that's...
Okay, so you're not in favor of adding slash retention after expansion in number eight? You're proposing just to leave it as is?
Again, I'm not making the motion or anything like that, but yes, that would be where I would fall.
Figure out where we are. Okay. I'm flexible either way.
I am, too. I mean, I just feel like it can, as written, it encompasses what we want to accomplish on any front, even if it is expansion, or I mean, retention. But if we want to put retention in there, I'm fine with that as well.
Is there anybody willing to make a motion to any of those?
Well, did you want to, John brought up another section.
A third item, yes. Yeah, and I'd like to go back to, again, the eligibility of businesses.
That's valid, that's valid.
As well. I understand the flexibility, and we don't know what the future holds, but to me, I think this provides some consistency with eligibility that would be consistent with potentially our abatement policy of using constitutional tax abatement and/or industrial revenue bonds as those businesses that fit into that category would be eligible for a tax incentive here.
Okay, John, referring back to the spreadsheet of incentives, I liked the ways they were worded in some communities where they may use those criteria, like industrial revenue bonds, but then they excluded industries that they didn't want to consider, such as restaurants, et cetera.
Again, I'm looking at that column, I'm getting my bifocals here.
I was just saying, figure out how to read that.
I think in all sixteen, just about all of them, well, here I'm talking about retention here, and then I'm also referring to the other column that talks about constitutional tax abatement or IRBs.
I thought they were... I'm comfortable with using the IRB criteria, but I would like to exclude businesses that traditionally don't meet the criteria we've laid out for the majority of their payroll. Does that make sense? So, I don't have the spreadsheet on me, I thought I did, but I have a different one. On some of those, they've specifically excluded certain industries.
Yeah, you know, for example, up in Johnson County area, they had a premium for high-tech, and some of them, like, I can't...
Car washes, bank branch offices.
Those are all excluded.
Exactly. I would like a little bit more thought. If we include IRBs as our criteria, those eligible for IRBs, I would like to exclude, have exclusions in there, certain business-type exclusions.
And again, this document here is all about property tax...
That's abatement, yeah, this is not cash incentive.
But it would make it consistent on the job incentive portion with property tax abatements, and it'd just make it easier for companies to understand.
Yeah.
I mean, I think you bring up a really good point, John, that we need consistency across the two policies.
I don't know what's out there, but we could get caught in a situation where, you know, we're uncomfortable, and I suppose we could still deny that, but again, for consistency policy purposes, I like the thought of not necessarily putting a laundry list of companies that we're going to exclude, but incorporate the language of eligible businesses that qualify under the constitutional tax abatement and/or industrial revenue bond use.
Are we then opening ourselves up to incenting business types that we don't necessarily want to incent?
And, you know, I don't know exactly what's all qualified for IRBs.
Yeah, I'm not sure either, I mean, it's, I mean, the Wesley Towers of the world.
Wesley Towers.
But they don't pay any taxes anyways.
Hotels.
Hotels, yeah. I think we want that provision.
And, you know, hotels with restaurants, I mean, it's, I mean, and we do IRBs that we don't provide any property tax, it's just basically a financing tool, so...
Remind me again, what were the three ones under the constitutional tax abatement? You said manufacturing?
It's the manufacturing, distribution, and research and development, and each of those will have a NACs code of a whole host of different types of companies that fit into those NACs codes. of a whole host of different types of companies that fit into those NACs codes. Jim Saitnider, are you at all familiar with the latitude of those NACs codes?
Oh, I'm not real...
Yeah.
Real certain on certain things, but, um, you did say one thing that really struck me.
Jim Saitnider, interim planning director, uh, when you use the term wealth, I think that's a great term and a great, um, indicator of what companies or businesses or activities could bring to a community. Protecting wealth and the transfer of wealth, I think, is one of the greatest challenges a community like ours has. And, uh, e- even, uh, in mentioning things like, uh, certain, uh, retirement homes or things like that might be bringing a bundle of wealth into the community, uh, may or may not stay, but, um, I, I think there should be some thought, uh, with wealth managers or people like that, uh, community foundation folks or things like that, but those kinds of things that would have a potential of, uh, being positive wealth to the community, I think that would be one really good, uh, you know, point to, uh, as part of that discussion. As far as the codes go, uh, I think this is such a changing world, and I think, uh, things like 5G and all of these things coming, I'm not sure how we, we set and we can forecast what the, the next wave of jobs are. I think I heard somewhere that the, uh, fourth grader's job hasn't even been, uh, you know, intended yet. So, uh, I know you have a huge task of, of trying to decide what is good and what is fair, but I, I think your, your points are spot on, I think retention, but at that term wealth or the, how the, the company's impact would bring wealth or protect wealth in a community ought to really be a consideration.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, let, let's think a little bit about some projects that we've given job money to that wouldn't fit in this. And, and, and John, you've been around, but my mind's going blank, but Damian, for example, remember Damian, they were the...
Yes, worldwide.
Yeah.
Right.
You know, did for Dylan's, it did labeling, that kinda stuff. And we provide a job incentives to them, would they fit in these three? I mean, are they a research and development company? Probably not.
And distribution.
Distribution, probably.
Distribution, and they're, and they're, they're labeling, but...
Yeah, labeling.
You know, just a private label, but, yeah, I, so, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, right.
I still think...
Trying to think of some other ones.
Item, item number eleven gi- gives us the latitude to, to opt out. It says, "The eligibility and amount of the job incentives will be determined," that's, that's the final phrase. It, it basically gives us an out to anything, in my opinion.
I, I agree.
I, I go back to saying, why limit it at all? Uh, I think we would limit applications or considerations of something that we might want to, but number eleven gives us the, the, you know, we say, "No, no, that doesn't, that doesn't fit, we're not going to." Um, and I just heard John, and, by the way, I agree with, with Jim, the idea of wealth, and I don't know how you mention and measure that, but it, it, it certainly is a con- definitely a strong concept to keep in mind, but, oh, Wesley Towers or something like that, my gosh, wouldn't we want to incent something that, that size or, or whatever, even though it, it happens to be a retirement center, but...
That employs a lot of people.
Well, we're going from total flexibility to still a little flexibility, but a little more...
Some structure.
... formal structure, I guess, and, and, you know, this can be a first step. Um, and then, as, you know, the one section that we're gonna evaluate this, 'cause I guarantee you, probably two months from now, um, we're gonna, Dave and I are gonna be at the chamber on a meeting, and say, "Ah, darn, this doesn't fit our policy."
Right, yep.
How are we gonna, how are we gonna address that, and, uh, so...
Well, that's the great thing about policies in general, and especially this one, that's written like it is. We can change it if it doesn't fit our needs.
Before we do it, yeah, exactly.
So, again, it goes back, and I, I chose eleven, and, and, and I think that's the one that encapsulates it. Uh, i- if you feel that there's the flexibility to include, uh, a retention piece, if, if necessary, if warranted, uh, or exclude an applicant, even if they might fit the criteria, uh, if you feel that the, the verbiage in there and the strength upholds that, uh, then it, the document probably stands as written. And, and wouldn't necessarily require any additional definition, uh, or refining, if you will. Don't know if that resonates with anybody else or not. Uh, the, the one other item that we didn't address, I don't think in, in that, uh, we talked about the eligibility piece, we discussed retention, uh, we're not necessarily done with those conversations, but then you'd also mentioned, uh, the example of the link in the Avenue B.
Yes, right.
Uh, maybe we can touch on that as well while we're, while we're in the subject there. How do you feel that needed to be addressed, or is or is not addressed?
Well, it's just, it's just kinda some unfinished business, uh, in my judgment, that we responded to these positively, and I thought that was, that was a good decision on both of them, but again, we didn't have any policy. Now we've got this, this proposed policy, does that situation or a situation like that need to be incorporated into a policy? This one or something separate?
Well, not this one.
Yeah, it's not really job creation.
It's not a job creation.
Right, okay, that's not...
I guess my thought on that one is, in both those instances, those were street projects that at some point in time, we probably would've had to do...
Something.
Something, you know, that would've come in under normal city maintenance, maybe I'm wrong, but...
Well, they were both, yeah, I mean, major investment and...
Yeah.
Surrounded by curbs that have been broke out and needed to be replaced and...
The alleyway in Avenue B, I think there's pipes going through there, yeah.
Well, I raised the question about consistency when we talked about both of those cases, and so, I, now, I'll agree with Nancy's comment. I don't, and it definitely does not fit in job incentive or job creation. But I certainly support, and I'm glad you raised it, John, uh, the idea of, of, of somehow crafting some guidance uh, for ourselves as well as others in regards to tho- those kind of, of situations when they arise. I, I, I did then, and I still would like to see something, uh, that, that codifies to some degree of a policy in regards to how we would address those kind of things.
Do you know of any other communities that have something along that lines, where a private entity is doing some sort of a investment where the public has partnered with, and we've done those, we have examples of when we've done that, but do they have anything in writing, so to speak?
You know, we can look, I mean, typically, it's this and property tax and IRB policies and...
And then we address when we're approached.
Where that falls.
Yeah, where that falls.
You know, I mean, it's, it's, it's a, you know, why the building would've been in time that we would probably did the same kinda thing to? Um, I mean, we can, we can attempt to put a policy together, but not sure where we're gonna start, but, um, we can... There again, to me, of everything we've talked about today, where we want flexibility would be on something like that.
I agree.
Because they don't come along very often, um, and when they do, you kinda know it when you see it. Now, we're gonna have one come up, and they're gonna say, "Well, you did it at the link, and you did it at, uh, the other one." We know that, that's probably gonna happen.
Right.
Um, but it needs to be more than, you know, somebody putting a new garage door on the back of the building, and now we need to replace the street and the curb and the guts. I mean, the link was a several million dollar project as well as the other one, so, um, so...
And, and that may be, uh, a discussion for another day on a different item.
Yeah.
Um, not to dismiss that by any means, but again, it doesn't fall within the, uh, item C, the job creation incentive policy. Yeah, okay, well, with that being said, again, I guess I would entertain if there is a motion, uh, uh, as presented, or, or even a motion to, uh, make any amendments, or, or any additional discussion if necessary.
I move to approve the proposed job creation incentive policy as presented.
Okay, it's been moved? Is there a second? More discussion?
If it dies for lack of a second, that tells us something.
I guess it does.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, and that appears to be where we're at, so, um, I guess, uh, the sticking point, uh, I assume is, well, it's gotta be the two different options, the eligibility piece and the retention piece. Does anybody wanna lend anything additional to those?
Well, I'll give a stab at, um, the retention piece, um, lost my place here. I would move to approve the proposed job creation incentive policy as presented with, um, an amendment to article number eight to add the word, uh, behind the word expansion, uh, slash, uh, job retention.
Okay, there's been a new motion, uh, presented, uh, is there a second to that?
Second.
There is a second, okay, um, please call the roll.
Jessica?
Oh, you need to give me more time to think.
Oh.
Uh, I'm just not ready, no.
David?
Yes?
Soldner?
Hmm, I'm kinda with Steve, no.
Iris Dickerbacher?
Yes.
No. Our first fight.
It'd be, I, I just want more clarification, how you're, how you're gonna identify it.
Uh, and again, uh, not that we always have consensus, but we, we tend to have more consensus. In this situation, uh, does this warrant going back and, and, uh, looking at a redraft, how, how do we handle that?
Well, I think, we were just talking about that, and, and that's fine, but what do you want us to redraft?
Right.
What, I mean, it, and if it's, if it's the word add job retention, I mean, we can do that, you know, right here. Obviously, that didn't pass.
Yeah.
If it's to create a whole nother section of job retention and define that, then, yeah, we can go back and play with that. But there again, John, to your point, that, that puts more, that takes away some of our flexibility if we really get down to find job retention. I like how you proposed it in that it's, it's at least in there, it's a part of our policy, so we can say that, and I like that. Um, but we also have the ability to, to address it, um, and, and determine that, that specific project, so... I liked it better there than I would in a, uh, separate section called job retention, so...
Now seeing, I'm leaning more the other way, I'm trying to figure out if there's any other way we can do that.
Okay, and, and not wanting to kick any cans down the road, if we can get a result today, that would be the best option, but Steve, you did mention you're not there yet, does, are you suggesting you would want a little bit of time to stew on it? Or do you have a...
Yeah, I'm still leaning towards not even including it all. I, I feel we have the capacity to handle it now without anything being put in writing or adding the word.
We can take a five-minute break.
Should we have a caucus?
Hallway caucus.
Yeah, hallway caucus, ooh, boy.
I think they frown on that.
Oh, you can't do that? No, okay, uh-oh.
Well, I can, I can talk to him.
I think we all agree that jobs and economic development is probably the most important thing we can get behind as a community. So, um, I, I mean, we're spending all this time on, on this policy, which is good, but, boy, howdy, I hope we just have opportunity after opportunity to use it, you know? Um, I, I think that whatever we can do to provide flexibility for businesses coming in or businesses who are already here, who have already invested in the community, and are more likely to stay for the long term, uh, we need to do.
And then we go quiet again. Um, again, I, I stand by, uh, my fear is, and, and, and I kinda equate it to, um, uh, my own employment over history. I've, I've operated under the guise of not having an employee handbook, and I've operated under the guise of having an employee handbook. I've, um, I've been burnt both ways. Right? Um, uh, but I, I think what I enjoy about the, uh, the way it's presented is I, I truly believe the flexibility is in there for that retention piece, and this is one man's, one man's opinion, uh, to encompass that if we feel it's warranted, and that's, that's why I just, I don't, I don't like the restriction of, of having the verbiage in there, I like the flexi- I prefer the flexibility of not having the word in there. And I know that's a subtle difference, but that's, that's where I'm, keep falling. And then going back to, again, uh, whether or not, uh, it's gonna create some sort of bidding environment or, uh, leveraging us against another community, another location, whatever it may be, I, I, I like the ability to be able to have it. I think that flexibility's in there, I don't like being restricted or held to that accord.
Not all retention projects are gonna be, uh, like types, and each of them have their own life. And, um, to me, this, uh, all, all this does is gives us the ability to either deny it, um, under the existing policy, or at least we've got some language that indicates, yes, we are receptive to a retention project based on meeting certain requirements, performance requirements, and I guess that's where I'm coming from.
But John, adding the word retention, there are no performance requirements in this policy that would, in my opinion, apply to retention, because it all talks about expansion. And, and I'm assuming, in, in a retention case, we may simply be incenting keeping what you've got today and...
To me, that, that, that's where the development agreement comes into play, is that you get into the specifics in terms of over time, what the performance requirements are going to be in terms of the retention of the jobs and the expansion of the jobs potentially, that that ultimately goes into the development agreement, which we refer that in, in the document here.
Well, we don't really refer to the development agreement that well.
Yes, we do.
It doesn't, um, item three.
It's up in the forefront.
All of them talk about it.
Okay, four does, okay, so maybe that's where, maybe that's where it needs to go then.
We could always put it...
I mean, that becomes the, that becomes the binding document.
Yeah, but I mean, maybe that's where...
By the company, that we put into that development agreement, certain requirements, like we've done before.
We've done many times, yeah.
The seemings of that.
Including.
Yeah.
It could be in that last sentence on four, "The city will consider approval of incentives for job creation slash retention identified and committed to by the applicant in the development agreement," et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, 'cause that, that does tie it more directly to the development agreement than just simply throwing the word out there.
Throwing the word out there, yeah, the development agreement, that's the key in terms of, uh, of the performance of that company with clawback provisions.
Um, again, I guess I would go back to, uh, I, I wouldn't wanna incentivize somebody for the status quo, um, if there could be some language or verbiage in there that, again, showed that they, uh, would grow. Uh, again, I'm questioning why they would wanna leave, they're, they're found, uh, for some reason, expenses are lower in another community, some, the tax abatement, they're, they're being lured for whatever reason. Um, and so if we're gonna incentivize them to stay, uh, and I don't know the ins and outs of the, uh, agreement that we had with the, um, Eden, I believe it was, uh, and so I won't pretend to know that, but, but I do know that at the end of the, the time period, the expiration date.
I agree.
It went away, they, they, they fulfilled their obligation, and that was a great, uh, deal for those individuals that were able to retain their positions, but, boy, when it was done, it was done, you know?
Probably the best example might be a local company, and we've had this before, that bought another company in Tennessee or New York or whatever, same, in the same business.
Mm-hmm.
And so the choice is, are we gonna bring them here?
Oh.
Are we going there? And again, if they come here, you're gonna pay on the increase in new jobs.
Mm-hmm.
But through that development agreement, you might incorporate, "We're also gonna incent what you're keeping," um, to maybe a lesser degree or something, so, I mean, that would be an example of...
Right.
Yeah.
You know, but, but just, "I'm gonna go to this other city because that's where I wanna go, and they've operated this," is, that's a little harder to, you know, quantify when you're competing with another city that, we, now we own this company, and it's either here or there, and we've had that.
We had that with, uh, the, the Marlin Company.
Yeah.
Uh, out of Kansas City, that were located over here in South Washington, and ultimately, and when the question came...
Yeah.
To the retention piece, um, we could not put anything, uh, before them that would demonstrate to the company our willingness to do, do those two things. One is to retain the existing jobs plus incremental job growth over a period of, of time. And whether that was a deciding factor, I can't say, but, uh, it, it's a, it's a tough, tough business out there. And we didn't have that ability.
Pardon me, you said that we couldn't do it, is it because there was no formal language?
There was no interest in it.
And there were, okay, 'cause the body, the deciding body at the time chose not to participate.
Yeah, that's, that's a little different.
There was no interest, there was no interest by the, uh, elected bodies.
Well, that's a different situation, I mean, if there's... Well, that's a different situation, I mean, if there's no interest as opposed to just simply not having it in the policy.
Is there, is there another motion then, an alternate motion, more discussion?
Well, if you would add the word retention in Article number eight, and then Jade, I think you said, was it number 13, would be to add the reference to the development agreement?
It was actually number four, the last sentence.
Oh, was it four?
It's four, the one the development agreement is, yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah, number four, yeah.
Yeah, Jade, do you want to repeat your verbiage?
Okay, so on the, on bullet point number four, the last sentence, the city will consider approval of incentives for job creation, we could also put slash retention, identified and committed to by the applicant in the development agreement, which are not speculative or conditioned upon the happening of future events.
And again, just to emphasize and make sure I'm getting it correctly, a development agreement, it is a binding...
A development agreement, it is.
That will be spelled out.
Formal, formal, all parties.
Very important piece of the whole process.
Yep, and we would have, this body would have the wherewithal to accept or not accept that development agreement, so then we have, that grants us some flexibility, I guess.
Well, I would suggest that paragraph four then falls after the, whatever paragraph we first introduced, because it sure seems to be odd to talk about retention. I don't know, it just seems, that's just a, an order of things in my thinking.
Because paragraph three, or I mean, bullet three referenced paragraph four.
And, you know, when we started adding retention, you go back up to the very top and the purpose, and it says...
Job creation.
New primary jobs, and now we would add new primary, new slash retain.
I know, it's, it's kind of silly for us to sit up here and try to revise a...
Well, and we can go back and work on it, but I, you know, again, I don't think, if this policy were approved in its written form today, would not prevent us from dealing with any kind of retention project.
No, I understand.
It would not.
Yeah.
It seems to me that the only thing we'd accomplish by adding the word retention in however many places would be simply, and I don't know if it's needed, but giving a message to the business community.
Yes, sending a message.
That we support existing businesses, and it sure seems to me that our conversation this morning has, has supported that, I mean, granted, we may be disagreeing on adding a word or words in a policy, but our, our conversation has been supportive of that, albeit it wouldn't be in a policy if we didn't add it.
Well, we'd need to take out the word new in the first sentence. I mean, if you're going to add retention...
I'd be in agreement with, with asking staff to, to somehow reword, rework this thing to include retention in whatever way it makes sense. I, I think our going through and finding a place to add the word retention here or there, or whatever, is, is probably going to mess it up more than asking them to rework it.
Rework it.
If we're willing to agree to have the concept of retention, and I would, I'd agree with that, if it's reworked, rewritten, and it makes sense in the, in how it flows, then I'll, I'd be supportive of that, seeing a redraft, so to speak.
Would you, again, under the current guise of the, that they could participate without any investment on their end? I know.
We're, we can't get off a center at this point, there have been two motions, one that wasn't seconded, and one, the one that was defeated, and I'm, I'm, I'm speaking out loud as where I would be, now, would I want to see something that talks about job creation above and beyond the retention, that'd be my preference, but again, I think, my stance still is, we can do the thing with retention without putting any words in there. Apparently, you know, we'd be simply giving a written message to the community of our support of, of retention, I, I don't think that's necessary, but to get us off a center, I'd be willing to go that route.
Does that seem to be the consensus then? See if someone could properly draft that, because again, it does, it leads into the first sentence, it leads into some other sentences that, that would require some redrafting.
And I thought this was the, the easy one.
You're mistaken.
Little did you know.
We've got to work that out on the next one, so, but it, yeah, we, we're going to add it here, there, there's other places, as we pointed out, and...
Yeah, okay, it, it seems that, that is the case, I asked the question, but I think I know the answer, so, with that, can, can I direct you to clean that up?
I'll work on that, I'll work with Deborah a little bit and see where that's at.
Find out where that's at.
Some thoughts on that.
Maybe look at some other examples, we have these other communities and how they use their verbiage.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Okay.
Good.
So, unless there's any...
Well, just table it.
Table, table.
I mean, isn't that what we have to do, is just table it?
Okay, so we'll table that till the next discussion.
Well, I appreciate your indulgence on this, but I think it's an important step for us, and again, I'm, I'm a little right brain, that I prefer some level of consistency, and hopefully we can get to that end.
I think we can get there, very good. Do you think you'll have that prepared for the following meeting?
Uh, you know, I can.
I'm asking.
Probably.
Hang on, Mr. Dirdel just said something, now, are you also going to be talking about some IRB slash, no, okay, just the retention issue?
Okay, I think that's the direction that we got, was that piece, the flexibility within the policy, maybe we don't want to restrict it to certain criteria at this point.
So is that the sentiment then, to not incorporate any language in terms of eligibility of businesses, to leave that open?
It's my sentiment.
Mine as well.
Yeah. I mean, I don't have enough background information to know what, what those categories are, to know what you would omit, yeah, I mean...
And going back to what Jim had said, we don't even know what the next great big thing might be, and if we restrict ourselves out of it, I think the verbiage is there that allows us to, I keep using the buzzword flexibility, but to either accept or reject something we, that this body doesn't feel is appropriate.
I'm fine with that.
Is that right, okay, okay. You got your, your guidance?
I'll work on it.
You know where you're headed?
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Very funny, thank you.
Yeah.
Good discussion.
There it is.
It was, John, thank you for raising those things, just a good discussion.
Very good points, very good points. I guess that brings us to the next item, if you would please.
Item nine, report of city officials.
I'll start at this end, Jade, if you've got something.
I do have a few things, thank you. I wanted to remind everyone that it is the week of the young child, there are lots of activities for children in the zero to eight age range being put on by different groups across the city, if you go to heylittlehutch.org, I think most of those are listed, especially several in downtown Hutchinson on third Thursday, and also at Dillon Nature Center, so encourage everyone to take their kiddos out to the Touch a Truck and other events on third Thursday. Another thing I wanted to bring up is, John, you and I had some conversation about the process for when a complaint is brought against someone who works for the city, like maybe through the, carrying out of their duties, maybe that's an inspector, or maybe that's somebody else. Where do those complaints go? Do they go to you, do they go to the police department, and how are those kind of handled?
Well, typically, and, you know, they would come to me, they could come to a director, if it were a fire or police, it could go directly to those chiefs, or it would come to me, and then we would, with proper information, would, would investigate and find out exactly what's there, there's no formal written, you know, policy, other than it's my responsibility to, to manage the employees, and so if anybody had that, or if they didn't feel comfortable talking to me, they would probably talk to one of the elected officials, and then you all probably would talk to me, and we would do what we do.
Conduct a investigation.
So, yeah, I mean, it's, and I, I mean, honestly, we would, we follow up on, we don't have a lot of those, thank goodness, but, but we take them very seriously, and, but we also require individuals, if they've got a complaint, to be specific, not just a generalization, because it's, there's no way to investigate that, so...
Okay, and you, you spoke of if somebody had a problem with, you know, police or fire, addressing just the police department, do we have, or have we considered a citizens' review board? We, we have something that I think is under probation.
There, there's been discussion over the years about that, but we do not have that. I will tell you, we do have a very, very specific internal investigation process that Chief Hooper's, you know, implemented, so, yeah, but there's not, there's not this citizens' advisory committee that you're talking about.
Yeah, okay.
You know, we do, the chief does meet with the group once a month, and I'm not sure what they even have a title, it's kind of an informal group, the NAACP's represented, as well as other entities there, they meet once a month with the sheriff and police, police chief.
Yeah, so I might maybe just have further conversation with him about that, if that's something he's worth exploring or not, but I just wanted to bring that up, and thank you so much.
Yep.
That's all I have.
Steve, anything to offer?
No, thank you.
John?
No.
Nancy?
Nope.
Okay. Just only because it was brought up in the earlier conversation with the barriers when, when blocking streets or whatever, don't want to have that discussion this moment, but if that is something that we're going to look towards requiring, it seems like something that's Chief Hooper's pretty passionate about for one, for the sake of safety, maybe we can make some inquiries as to what it would cost for some of those barriers, where a person would house those barriers, how they are delivered, because if we do require that, we might have to, like you had suggested, deliver those and pass off that charge, what's that charge going to look like to do that?
Yeah.
So, not today, but eventually if we can get some answers to those questions. That's all I had, Mr. Manager.
A couple of quick things, Park Master Plan, Green Play, back in town, it's April 23rd at nine o'clock AM.
April 23rd?
I got them. That was the, just kind of a follow-up, we met with them a couple of months back.
Is that going to be...
Yeah, we'll do that in here, right, yeah, in here. And then we, we scheduled a study session, I think everybody was good on May 9th, and we're going to have the company that did the pavement management, have them come and give their report, and then we'll also spend some time that day, I think, to talk about that code mitigation program that we talked about during the retreat, and that's a policy discussion.
And that's at eight, John?
If that's appropriate for you all.
It's on my calendar, yeah. Anything else to offer?
Yeah, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, very good. Next item's adjournment, anybody want to make that motion?
It's been moved.
Deckard?
And it has been seconded, please call the roll.
Deckard?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Solner?
Yes.
Cyrus DeCarvalho?
Yes.
Hans Key?
Yes.
Mm.